All right, order of business. We have. Let's take a look.
No.
No public comment? Okay, all right. So we will move on from public comment to presentations. And we've got some student presentations here tonight. So I think we'll probably start with Jacob and Paola. Is that our? Who is up over here? Thanks for bearing with us, by the way. This is obviously rescheduled and we all kind of had to call it off two weeks ago. So appreciate you going with us.
I can. Okay. So today, I was gonna, well, actually, a few weeks ago, I was gonna talk about paper, but I asked someone to be doing it today. Click the middle button?
No, the arrow. Tip title.
Right. Yeah, I'm gonna be talking about paper online tutoring. So what I did is I went around the school and I talked to staff and students about sixty, seventy students, maybe ten staff members, did a kind of informal survey of how they felt about paper and how students feel about it. I could not find, I couldn't find a student who used paper, unfortunately. I had found a few that previously had used it. And they, of the review complaints, they said, and they said that they, instead of going using paper, now that we're back in person, they tend to go to their teachers directly. A lot of students are very comfortable with their teachers approaching them, ninth period, during their free periods. And students feel the process of paper takes a long time. Truthfully, it does. It's a very long process. They'll transfer you between tutors. One tutor doesn't know what you're do, what to do, they'll transfer you to another one. Talked to one student who said they were transferred seven times in one night and never got an answer. And the documents take a very long time to be reviewed. Furthermore, the tutors don't always give the best advice. This is what I've heard from them. It's sometimes, well, I should say sometimes, sometimes incorrect. And their tone is blunt. They are basically told, they're not supposed to give you the answer, they're supposed to give you the means to get to the answer, but that's not always what the student needs in most circumstances. How teachers feel about paper. Similarly, they don't want to get very much better. It's inconvenient and sometimes it will teach, it will try and teach your students a method that isn't necessarily the same method that they would like for their students to be learning. They'd rather, could students, they'd rather students consult them rather than paper. Their essays also take too long and have been added quick corrections. I talked to one teacher who had to actually push back the due dates for one of their essays because the reviewed, the raw, reviewed versions, the essays that they had their students submit to paper hadn't come back in time. And one, something I thought, something one of the teachers told me that I thought was really important is to send that, it would have been useful during COVID, but now it just isn't useful. Now, the way I think we can fix this, the way we can improve this, is a peer-based tutoring system. Essentially, how this would work is we would have high school students during ninth period or their free hours, go down to the middle school and help them with whatever they're struggling with, whether it's content or if it's just getting work and stuff like that. And the thing is, many juniors and seniors aren't able to go home during study laps. I know one of my friends has a study lab, second, third, and fourth, two hours straight because he has something first, he's not allowed to go home. So he has a lot of free time to do this kind of thing. And student tutors would teach the same way they learned. A lot of our high school students were taught by the same middle school teachers that the middle schools, middle schoolers are being taught by now. So the methods that the high schoolers can teach to the middle schoolers are gonna be the same as what the teachers are trying to teach. And this also offers additional opportunities for service learning hours for students that may be struggling with that kind of thing, or for students who just want to build their resumes. It will, it's a better utilization of study labs and after-school time for not only the middle schoolers, but the high schoolers as well. And stu, I, from my experience, I've seen that students are more willing to listen to other students as opposed to teachers or just people they do not know online, that they, that kind of interaction online is not very personal, and I find it to be incredibly effective. And student, student teachers can consult with the middle school teachers to find areas where students are struggling, something we don't have with paper. So more advantage is it helps students with resume building and it fosters a close relationship within the community. It really builds that camaraderie feeling between the schools, which I think is important. And teachers, it teaches the high schoolers responsibility. Now, the logistics of peer-based tutoring, there's a lot of different ways we could go about doing this. One of the ways we could do it is structure again, line up club. There would be staff advisors who coordinate schedules and for best fit for the, for student, for student tutor. But how it would work is we would find someone, most likely at the high school level, who can coordinate the schedules of the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. And say, this person has study lab six, as well does this middle schooler who may be struggling, maybe they can go to the, to the middle school foyer, that's a great space for this kind of thing to happen. And student teachers, yes, would meet in the library of the middle school foyer and they would coordinate with teachers and tailor tutoring for individual students. This is much cheaper, much cheaper than paper. I found that this paper costs the district twenty-three and a half thousand dollars every year, is that right?
Yeah.
So this is a far more, this is, in my opinion, this would be a far better system for helping educate, for providing a tutoring service to our students, and it would be far cheaper. Are there any questions?
That's fantastic.
Very good. Well, Jacob, when you were interviewing students and teachers, were you doing that across the district, all levels, or just mainly in the high school?
So what I was doing, I wasn't conducting, like, a sit-down interview. It was more between periods in my classes, I would approach my peers informally and say, hey, have you ever used paper? Or during downtime in our class, or, yeah, something, that's something.
The comment about teachers preferring differences between the tutor, big tutors teaching a formula versus the teachers that primarily aim at math courses, or?
So what I found is the social studies and the US teachers I talked to said that they had at one point recommended, or actually they made it mandatory for their students to put their essays through paper, but they didn't like, they didn't, they didn't like the feedback that paper was given. And for math, similar, it's a similar problem where the feedback wasn't always adequate. And when you get, when you get into higher level math, like, I talked to one of my friends who's in calculus, and they were bound to tutor in tutor, and then they just weren't given math课, but, and then another friend who is just in algebra one, and is, one of the tutors tried to teach them the high level calculus, just in algebra one. That's.
So the next subject we would like to talk about is our mascot subject. So we know that you guys are gonna end up forming a committee to end up selecting our red jacket student mascot. And I would like to say that there has been talk with high school and middle schoolers, they have been throwing out ideas that, you know, they'd like red jacket to be the Raiders or the Rams or the Cardinals. So we'll go more into depth with that once we figure out, like, how you guys are gonna structure the mascot building and the process of it. But I will say that there isn't any negative effect about the new mascot. A lot of kids are actually looking forward to it and are very excited to see what the red jacket mascot would be. The one thing is, they would not like red users, and I guess, from what we look it up on the internet, it says something else. I personally do not know, because I haven't looked it up, but certain students have, and they don't like it, but they would like to be either the Cardinals, or because they like to confuse us with Bird Peak, I guess the Rams. So, um, there's a, there's a tie. There's a tie. So, yeah, in the next couple months, I will be kind of going more in-depth with the students on what they would like. And I was thinking of having kind of like a Google forums of like what would be the top three mascots, like, you know, red jacket students would like for the future. And it's not just so high schoolers and middle schoolers can pick it, it's also for, like, pre-k or kindergarten through high school. So like every kid would have a say or would have an opinion. And then I was talking to Mr. Bernard, and I was like, well, once we get the data from that, we can give it to the staff, you know, we can give it to the teachers, so they can also get like an input of what they would like red jacket mascot to be. And then, once we go more into that, we would get the final three that people would like, and maybe that would give a better idea for you guys to pick the new red jacket mascot. So that's mighty for the next surprise. So, is there any questions about it that you guys would go with?
Um, so the effort that you're putting forth is just the school environment, not the community environment?
Well, I was thinking also to like send it out to the commu, community, so they can also have like, oh, like, well, what if one of these doesn't sound good, but like have like another like part where it's like, oh, but what if we wear red jacket phoenixes or something like that? So like, not only will the students have a say in that, but I was thinking also the community can also, you know, have a say, think of what they would like red jacket to be. And I know it may be weird for a lot of parents and stuff, because we've always been the red jacket Indians, and it's weird going into a new, like, formation, I would say. But I know that once we get the information from the students, we would like to go ahead and like go into the community and like send it out a certain way, maybe it'll be a student, um, parent portal, or like even email, or like different ways. So, so every community member could also have a say. And it's not only just so they have a say, but it's also for every individual, not only in the community, but in the school, to be heard and, you know, feel like they're being seen in a way, so.
So even if that process was reversed and the community told the students, these are our choices, they'll be fine with you, so it's mutual, everybody will have their share and their share.
Right, so, yeah, everyone would have a fair share, and it would just end up being one of the top three mascots that our community and our students would like red jacket to be. So out of those three, after all the data and stuff, we collect the top three, and those would be sent, that last one would be sent out, and maybe it would give a better sense for you guys to understand, well, a lot of people are choosing Cardinals, let's say, well, maybe it's a good idea, let's talk it more out and see how better it fits for red jacket to be.
I like what you're saying with the collaborative effort.
Me too.
You may have an idea, somebody else may fill in on the same ideas.
Right, and I like giving all students a voice, because community members can come to community forums, and it's, you know, we're not always bringing our children to those, so I think it's really great, a student-led effort to get the students' voice.
Could you do something the same night or the same day that we actually have the district budget vote? Where you have something in the lobby where people could express or do submission at the same time?
I thought we were, are we using the same timeline to have it on the budget vote this year?
I think we should, so.
Yeah, it'll be, I mean, we have a process. So Jacob can speak a little bit to what he's been asked to do too for this.
Yeah, so, just a quick question, when would the budget vote actually be?
The pressure is on.
It's May eighteenth.
Third week of May.
It's a date.
Yeah, so Jacob can talk a little bit about what recently has transpired from the formation of the committee, which Jacob is gonna be a part of. So Jacob can talk.
So my understanding of the committee, and I have not gone, I haven't gone in depth as to our responsibilities and what we'll be doing, but what I can say is, what it seems to be is that the committee is comprised of multiple members of the community, members of the staff, and, and students. It's a good mix of all of them. And that committee is going to be creating the form and kind of the guiding principles that we're gonna make this decision by. But I believe we have discussed that, dependent on the decision of the committee, the ultimate decision will be in the hands of the students.
Yeah, so there's members in the audience that are a part of the committee, and there's members of town hall that are, that have come, there's members of the board that'll be a part of the committee. Jacob is one of the student reps that's on the committee. And really, the committee's gonna take what was described by Paola and try to bring it into a fashion for the district that can be organized and manageable. And the committee can be a voice for the community, can be a voice, there's staff members on it, there, again, our board members on it, students on it, and the idea is to bring those folks together to collectively look at the survey, talk about how we wanna send out a survey. There's lots of pieces to that that we've learned watching other districts do this, and then how do we take that data, analyze that data, and then potentially go back out and have to survey again so that it's more clear, with still that goal and timeline. If, if we can, we will do the budget vote, but I can't guarantee that just the length of time, we wanna make sure, I would rather be more, I would rather err on the side of taking the time than rather pushing it into the budget vote. So I think if we can get it there, great, but I think if we hit reasons for us to slow down, be reflective, be thoughtful, and, and step back, we could do that too. I think we've all agreed, though, that we wanna be able to roll into, start the next school year, with our students being able to say, this is, and our families and our community, and we say, this is who, this is what we're moving forward with.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, seniors were pretty clear about that.
Thank you.
That's, that's fantastic. I mean, I couldn't imagine a more, you know, meaningful update for the students. I don't, we've never really had an opportunity like that, so I'll, I'll do it. Great job, you guys, thank you so much. Okay, and continue with presentation. I think we've got athletics.
Can I be able to just find it? I don't know how I can follow up to that wonderful presentation. Your professionalism and your public speaking skills are awesome, guys, and we love it. So I am excited tonight to talk about our athletics department and all the different things that have been going on, the different accolades and challenges that have been happening this school year, participation numbers, and then highlighting some newer things that we have implemented and are piloting for the remainder of the school year. So I'm gonna break it down by our fall season, winter season, spring season. Obviously, winter and spring will not have as much data, just because we are still in the swing of our winter season, and we haven't yet come to the spring twenty-four season. Talking about some new things, and then some highlighting some red jacket pride. Maybe. Maybe not. All right. Fall season, so this is the breakdown of our numbers, participating, participation numbers across the board. I can only go back as far as the 2019, 2020 school year in terms of looking up data for our numbers and the archives that we have through our family ID program. But I was able to pull all of these, I have a running checklist just from the years since when I took over, and we've been monitoring these numbers every single season and every single school year, and I plan on continuing to do that to just kind of see what different trends we see across the different seasons and across the different sports programs. So as you can see, most of them have little green arrows. Football, we have seen a slight decrease, which I don't think is anything that we need to worry about at this current moment. But as we can see, some of our youth programs coming up in different age groups and kids coming up from the elementary school, we're just not seeing the participation as much as we would like to, which is why I think that some of that decrease is speaking there. But overall, most of our sports programs in the fall season have seen a huge increase. For those of you that were on the board last year, I think you probably remember or might remember me talking about girls soccer, was something that I personally was worried about just from the numbers that we were seeing. And our modified soccer team this year, the numbers skyrocketed, which I think is great. So now it's just having those conversations about sustaining those numbers and how we can continue to keep those growing so that we can continue to have the different programs that we offer. So that would be for fall.
For those numbers at the beginning of the season or the end of the season?
This is the beginning of the season. So fall season, again, just some highlights, total participation has stayed the same or increased slightly. We had five merged athletes, two scholar athlete teams, which I will highlight in a different slide. Twenty-four out of seventy overall fall season varsity athletes got the individual scholar athlete designation, which means they have a individual GPA of ninety or higher. An APP athlete for varsity cross-country, and then we had three dual participation athletes this year, which offers the opportunity for kids to participate in two different programs at the same current season.
Shannon, for the scholar athletes, do the varsity players have to be in high school for that to count or are they in middle school?
Nope, any varsity athletes, so that they can be, yep, yep. Some fall season highlights that we had, and I apologize if the pictures are a little small up there for you, but we had a lot that I wanted to portray. So homecoming, I know most of you were there at homecoming, I loved seeing the representation that we had just from the community, the board, administration, faculty, staff, students, everything, it was great. So we did do the Friday Night Lights field this year. You know, I was a little hesitant going into it, just because it does take a little bit more work to put on, but I think overall, it was a great success. I know some of the feedback that Mr. Bernard got when he does some lunch group with NHS, those kiddos, you know, highlighted it, they loved it, they thought it was a great experience. So I think that was something that was great, that we could maybe looking to continuing moving forward. Our girls soccer team wanted to do a breast cancer awareness game this year. Very low, low-key, was something that I think we can continue and continue to grow as the seasons go on. They had made, one of the team moms had made shirts for all of them, they collected donations, they sold little bracelets on the sidelines for a dollar, and we ended up raising just shy of two hundred dollars to donate to breast cancer awareness. The Bob Dylan International is something that we do several years for cross-country. This event is magnificent, magnificent for the cross-country runners. Anybody that has ever been a part of that, I invite, if you haven't been a part of it, I invite you to come. Cross-country was never a sport that I was too familiar with in my high school days or even in my college days. And I, the first year that I went to this event, I was blown away, just at the positivity, the sportsmanship, how the athletes run, their motivation, it's just a great event overall. So I think that that's something that we obviously would love to continue to do. And then game day cheerleading was something that was new this year. Section five in NISPA has decided to go to what's called game day cheerleading for the fall season. This is different from competitive cheerleading. Long story short, game day cheerleading is more of a highlight of engaging the crowd versus entertaining the crowd. So competitive cheerleading, they're kind of involve more dance routines, different rubric that they get graded on, game day cheer, and Paola left, but she was a part of the game day cheer, is definitely more of your old-school, just entertaining the different chants, the routines and stuff like that. So we did host our first-ever game day cheerleading competition. It was great. We got a lot of great feedback. I know a lot of the teams that were a part of it, our coaches, our athletes, our parents, were all a little concerned, just because I think everybody's so used to that competitive cheerleading vibe, but they were excited to try it just because they knew that the winter season would uphold the competitive cheerleading. So we hosted that as well. So fall athletes that we have, and obviously, like I mentioned, this one you'll see a lot more, just because we have finished the season, winter and spring, I'm sure we're gonna have just as many, if not more, hopefully. So Nate Close is one of our merged athletes over here in the corner. He tied for first place for boys golf, qualified for sectionals, which will take place in the spring. That is a huge highlight for us. I'm very proud of him, he's an avid golfer. I love that we have the opportunity to be able to let him go play at Mid Lakes and be a part of that program. Three of our senior athletes were invited to the enemy all-star game that was at U of R this year. So we had Michael representing football, and then we had two of our cheerleaders, Alex and Olivia represent there. One of our cross-country, Aurora, was twenty-third at leagues and got third-team all-star. Our cheerleaders came in second place for the first-ever game day sectionals, hosted at Gates Trial, which was a huge, I think, accolade for us. And then three of our soccer seniors, one was first team, one was second team, and then we have one honorable mention all-stars. So those are some highlights that I wanted to share with you. As I talked about briefly, scholar athletes. So our girls cross-country team, they break it down, this one makes it break it down by girls and boys cross-country, and they do the same for track and indoor. So the girls cross-country team this year, which only consisted of the four of them, but they did make it because most of them, I think, three out of the four had a ninety GPA or above, so they did qualify for that team designation. And then our girls soccer team also got the team accolade. So now going into our winter season, the overall trends that we saw here were increasing all across the board, which is great to see and hear. I don't have any overall concerns right now as far as participation numbers. I think seeing the increases over the years is positive for us to keep going and hopefully trending in that way. And like, as I mentioned, for the fall, we just, we need to start looking at how we can help sustain that and continue those growths. Winter athletes, total participation has stayed the same or increased. We have one merged athlete, the Way Figureless Panther hockey team. This is a compiled team of, team hosts it. I wanna say there's seven to nine schools that are a part of it. We do currently only have one athlete that participates, but he loves it, he's great, he's so thankful for the opportunity. He sends me a little thank you card at the end of every winter season, and I love that we can provide that for him. So there's Parker there for us. We had four APP athletes and six dual participation athletes. Some things that we have done or that are coming up, youth nights, we did youth night wrestling where Santa Claus, it was right before Christmas, Santa Claus did arrive, which happened to be one of our bus drivers. So I think that it just speaks to how the red jacket community just all comes together for our sports and our kids. So I thought that was great, the kids loved it. We were able to do a couple little youth wrestling matches. I know my coaches, this is something that they wanna continue and keep going, and I said, absolutely, let's do it. We are hosting youth basketball, RJ Hoops, which will be on February fourteenth, in correlation with our boys basketball senior night. So we usually get a decent crowd for that, and the kids love being able to get colored on the court and do all of that. Sports Booster and Twin Cities Basketball Tournament. Sports Boosters always holds our girls basketball tournament with four different teams, including ours, and then the Twin Cities Line Club, they always host the boys basketball tournament. Our boys team was the winner of this tournament this year, so that was an exciting, exciting event for them, exciting times. And then we will, next weekend, I believe it is, February third, will be the RJ Cheer Extravaganza, which will go back to that traditional style of competitive cheerleading that we're used to, but we have about fifteen to twenty schools coming, and we're always excited for that. It's a great, well-run tournament or competition. Some accolades that we have had so far, again, Parker, our hockey player, scored his first ever goal, which would also mean that it is the first ever hockey goal scored for an RJ athlete. I wanted to highlight that. I know Mr. George did a great job also highlighting that. And we have our tech teacher, we have the puck, as you can see, he's holding it there. And our tech teacher, Mr. Powers, is making a little play form so that we can put the puck right in there and kind of highlight that for Parker, because I think it's something that we need to highlight, it's great. And then Matt Allen, one of our wrestlers, got his hundredth career win on the mats. And as I said, more to be determined, and I'm sure there's been more since, I originally thought that we were gonna present this about two weeks ago, so. And now spring, again, I don't obviously have the spring twenty-four numbers, but I am just, from talks and interest forms and, you know, looking at the data and the numbers, I anticipate them being very similar to what this is, if not a little bit better. Softball, outdoor track, we're seeing a trend with girls specifically in our running sports. I just don't think we have as many female athletes as I would like to have, so it's just figuring out ways to get them motivated, getting them to want to be a part of it. Some of our grades are, I think, very boy-heavy, which there's nothing wrong with that, but it does obviously hurt our girls athletics programs or any of our clubs for those female representation. So again, just talking, working with coaches, providing opportunities, motivating kids to wanna do things, highlighting these things. I know Terry and I, in the fall, had did a, done a presentation with some of our middle school female athletes, just highlighting the different opportunities that we have, and I think that was a great meeting that we had with them. And I think he's also successful with us in maybe carrying on with those different things and just further promoting what opportunities our kids have. All right. And then I know Mr. Bernard is not a themes person, but I think we can all agree that we have two things that often keep getting brought up as we continue these, these presentations and throughout the school year. So in my opinion, I think building culture is one that we've all been working on. So these are just some of the things that are new within the RJ athletics department that you might see or hear about, especially if you have an athlete in our school. So at the top there, I have the cave crew, seasonal athletics banquet, and future planning to add boys golf and possibly girls like football. The cave crew, I am going to highlight in a different slide. So if you do have questions about what that is, if you might not know, I will discuss that. Seasonal athletic banquet, some of you might know, we used to do the, at the end of the school year, all three seasons and one awards night. Some feedback that I got from a lot of people was that it's just, it's very long, it's often very close to the high school awards night, the middle school awards night, we weren't seeing as much participation or attendance that I would like to do, because our athletes- or attendance that I would like to do because our athletes do great things and we want to highlight those. And it had been mentioned that we used to do pasta nights in correlation with the awards nights. So I did some digging, found out who did that, and we brought that back for the fall season awards night. I think we had a great turnout. I got a lot of good feedback. And I personally loved doing the pasta night afterwards. It gave me an opportunity to just kind of sit and get to know some more community members that I might not have an opportunity to meet with. The teams, the athletes were able to sit with their teams, their coaches and have like that one last hurrah. That was a great experience. And then boys golf and girls flag football. Boys golf, we do currently merge with Mid Lakes. It has been talked in the past that we possibly could have the numbers to try and have our own team. John Lombardi over at Mid Lakes and I, I believe, have a great rapport with each other. He's always very willing in accommodating to our athletes if we don't have these opportunities. And with that being said, he's also very willing and accommodating and I think grateful and excited for us that we have the possibility to demerge and form our own team. It would be minimal cost. It's really just the green fees and possibly polo for a uniform. All of our kids have their own golf clubs and golf bags and stuff like that. I did pull a meeting last week for our guys that go over in golf, just asking them, you know, what are your thoughts? What do you think for this? They were all for it. They were very excited about it. So it is something that possibly could be in the works for the future, for the fall season of 2024. Student athlete feedback forms and parent guardian forms, professional development opportunities for coaches and/or myself. And then annual review of the athletic handbook. So these feedback forms is something that I wanted to implement this year. I started to do it in the fall season first with just our student athletes because I wanted to see what type of response I would get. So these feedback forms are basically just like a questionnaire. It's on a Google form. I sent out to all of our fall student athletes. Give me an idea of how your season was, what went well, what didn't go well, what opportunities would you like to see differently? How did you, did you feel supported? Did you feel like you had enough time to do schoolwork, to manage, you know, your athletics, your other clubs that you do, X, Y, and Z? I actually got a lot of responses. It was really good feedback. And I would love to share some of that sometime because the responses that I got were so thoughtful. And I felt like I was talking to adults sometimes. It was great. And some of these kids were modified kids. So this winter season, I am going to continue to add to that and I'm going to send out a different feedback form to our parents and guardians of our athletes. To allow them to be able to have a voice, let me know what they think is going well, maybe some feedback information, highlights and different things. And I can just continue to collect data so that we can create more opportunities, make better informed decisions and ultimately improve our athletic department as we continue on throughout the years. And then I'm always reviewing the athletic handbook every single year. I have a running copy that I started when I first took over where I just had notes. I had to then print out a second copy and continue to make notes because it is something that I think we could probably modify for my committee in the next coming months, to just constantly look at that to see how we can improve things for our student athletes. And then continuing to add additional youth nights, sports summer camps and sports summer clinics. And the implementation of our Redjacket Hall of Fame, which we did, that was great. And I just realized I didn't highlight that. I'm one of our winter athletes, which I should have. So the cave crew, I did not talk about this. I did invite my four members of the cave crew to come tonight, but unfortunately because of the change in date. The two girls have basketball game probably starting in a few minutes and the wrestlers are over at East Rochester wrestling. Their hearts are out right now too. So they couldn't be here, but they did make me a little video to share with you guys so that they could be here in spirit. So the cave crew, what this is, is a student-led group to kind of highlight and promote different sportsmanship opportunities. It provides a student voice in a way that we can highlight different athletic opportunities, create different theme nights and ultimately give these kids voices to do what they want, right? Under some supervision. So the representatives this year were chosen by me. I just picked some kids that, you know, I think had great leadership skills, had good time management skills, that were athletes, that had a good rapport with their faculty, their staff, their teachers, their students, their peers. So it's a great group of kids. They have really great ideas. They're super fun to work with. We meet monthly. We created our mission, which is to foster a positive and inclusive school-wide community through meaningful athletic leadership. And my hope in piloting this year very minimally is if we can continue to grow this. For the next round of the cave crew, I would like to start getting feedback from some of my coaches on who they think portray a lot of leadership skills and who could represent these as well. So different things that they do, and I'm not going to steal their thunder from the video that they made. But they have a student-led Instagram account just to highlight different theme nights that they make. So I don't know if you've ever come to a basketball game, but a lot of our games, the cave crew came up from, our students' soccer division is called The Cave. So they make different theme nights, like blackout night. They did Coach Pano night one night where they all dressed up like Coach Pano because they think it's funny because he's always matching. So they did different things like that. Yes, they had his face on like a big fan pad, I think. It was, it's amazing to see what they do. They highlight modified kids, they highlight varsity kids. If you ever have a chance or maybe you have seen it, it's really great work that they do. I allowed them to keep this Instagram account and I told them I would not create my own for the RJ Athletics as long as, you know, they played nice and highlighted everything, which they are. It's been wonderful to see. And we've gotten a lot of media attention. I had a guy from the Finger Lakes time at a basketball game come up to me one day and he's like, hey, who runs that RJ Athletics account on Instagram? And I was like, oh, my cave crew does. He's like, tell me more. So I explained it to him. He's like, they do great work. It's amazing. The graphics that they make are beautiful. It's wonderful. But I'll let them talk about it if I can get this to work. I just hit it.
The cave crew is a group of students that promotes RJ culture, section five sportsmanship, and builds RJ athletics.
I think cave crew is beneficial because it allows me to be a leader, gives me a student voice, and gives me a greater responsibility.
As far as the cave crew run, an Instagram account, which helps to highlight both team and individual athletes' accomplishments. Their dedicated posts, like spotlight athlete, and then we also get together as a community and show pride by creating three nights for the games.
What they require of the cave crew is the opportunity that opens up for us to empower our boys in the community and protect their livelihoods.
Now, some of them were kind of hard to hear, but that was a little video that they wanted to create in their absence tonight. I do hope you enjoy that. I believe that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Piggybacking on Shannon's presentation in conjunction with Mr. McCarthy. On behalf of the cleaners and the maintenance, we'd like to thank the Twin Cities Lions Club for providing pizza to all the cleaners and maintenance last night to thank them for their hard work during that basketball tournament. So we're very appreciative of that.
We had some people really step up and some things that went haywire for a little bit. It was wonderful, so.
How do I get to my?
Be sure to be open at the top of one of those tabs.
Tim, I was wondering how you were going to segue into a budget presentation. That was good. Very appreciate it.
Glad to keep everybody awake at least for a couple of minutes before we get going.
Is it pizza? You bring pizza tonight for us?
And as we begin a budget presentation, it actually is beneficial that we have waited two weeks because in the last seven to 10 days, as we'll get into, we have learned a lot about the state budget. So we have a little bit more information, whether it be good or whether it be bad than we would have had two weeks ago. The budget calendar, tax cap, budget factors, all of the larger known factors that we know that are going to affect this year's budget as well as the bus replacement. The Board of Education's goal in terms of fiscal, work collaborative to understand and advocate for the financial needs of the district locally and at the state level, especially if we get into this, the state level is going to be very important this year. The board will maximize resources to ensure long-term sustainability and a supportive learning and working environment. The budget calendar, in January, the buildings, special education, transportation, technology, and athletics were given their allocations distributed. As we'll add buildings and grounds to this next year as Mr. McCarthy and myself work on it. But for this year, I'm still going to take over the, keep the budget aspect of maintenance and buildings and grounds and work with Mr. McCarthy. Everybody's Valentine's Day gift, you might have realized already, is to listen to me again with another budget presentation. And then it was listed as February 2024, but the governor's proposal for state aid actually came out at the end of last week. I can't remember if it was Thursday or Friday. As I said, whether it be good, whether it be bad, at least we have the numbers now or an idea of what the numbers might be in her thinking. In March, we'll get to the tax, we'll submit the tax levy limit calculation. March 9th, all of those departments will give their specific budgets back to me. March 13th will be budget presentation number three. March 25th is a very important day. Petitions available for Board of Education candidates for District Clerk, from District Clerk, Kim Brown. We've already had a couple of people reach out to us and we have to tell them that they're a little early and in March we'll get those ballots available. April 5th is our first publication of the legal notice. I have April 10th as budget adoption and presentation number four. And maybe number five because I think that the work session in March will also have a budget presentation. Property tax report card that we approved at that Board of Education meeting on the previous slide is due. April 22nd is when those petitions are due to Kim Brown. And on April 30th, the budget must be completed because on May 1st, copies of the proposed budget are made available in any of the offices as well as we must have it available, a copy available in the community library as well. May 8th will be our budget hearing. And March 14th is when the deadline for mailing budget notices is. Oh, I was wrong, Jacob. May 21st is the budget vote. I don't know how I had March, or May 18th in my head, but that's our community vote right here in this foyer from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The tax cap, everyone's favorite calculation. Our prior year tax levy is at 7,971,338. The tax base growth factor is still unknown, but I took the last five years, what it was, just to come up with an idea. Actually, our growth hasn't, has gone up the last couple of years more than it did five years ago. So that number might be a little bit higher. But it's a very small decimal, so the eight million dollar number is not going to be much higher. Pilots, you might remember from the presentation last year or seeing the budget, our pilots were around 6500 is what we anticipated. We went all the way into, it might have been October, September, October in Ontario County since Kim noticed that, oh, we, we made a new pilot and you need to send them a bill. So we have a new, a huge pilot that we were unaware of. So that's why that number is now for this year is 54,933.
Tim, doesn't the board have to approve a pilot?
The Ontario County Board has to approve it.
The local, the school board doesn't have to also?
Nope. Usually I, usually myself or Chris sit in the meeting with the town of localities, but in this case it was approved by the IDEA of Ontario County, so. Tax levies exclusion, exclusions, I mean, not including ERS, DRS is still zero. The allowable growth factor, that is the 2%, which is the most it can go up there, even though the CPI, CPI is above 4% for at least the third year in a row, but it's capped at 2% because that's why they call it the 2% tax cap levy. Pilots received for this year will be the same as last year. And the valuable carryover is just the, how much we could have taxed more last year to get to our tax cap. Another small number, I don't know what the number will be, but ERS is, and the employee retirement system is going up by more than 2% this coming year. So there will be an exclusion for that. I anticipate it'll be a small number, not having much effect on that tax levy limit of just over 8.3 million, a 4.2% increase, which will be a little bit larger, but it shouldn't be above 4.3. It should probably be about 4.26, I think, which will be a two, possible to increase the tax levy by up to 228,246 dollars. Budget factors that we already know about. Health, health insurance, again, could be going up by as much as 19%. Which could be an additional 426,000 dollars. In February, we'll have a meeting with the Health Insurance Consortium to get what that final number is. I don't anticipate it'll be 19%, but it will be probably 12 to 15%. So that's going to be another large increase. Teacher retirement system, a small increase. Could go up from 19, 9.76 to up to 10.25%. Employee retirement system increased from 13.1 to 15.2. As we talked about, the tax cap, it's going to go up by more than 2%. That is a blended rate because unlike DRS, wherever we pay the same percentage for, doesn't matter what tier you're in. In ERS, we pay a different rate for tier four, tier five, tier six, and tier three. Our serial bonded interest is going down around just over, just under 400,000. That is because we finally, from the last capital project, have gone to 15-year bond and we're not paying the interest on the bank, our principal interest, the larger amounts on the band. And workers comp is going to decrease from 103,614 to at least 98,433. I have that meeting on Friday. Right now, at minimum, it's going to be a 5% decrease. But if the board votes, it could be as much as a 15% increase. So it could be even 10,000 less than that. Communication team, even though this was added this year, it was added after talking about the budget last year. So we paid for our communication team. Positions funded by the American Rescue Plan. The American Rescue Plan goes through September 30th, 2024. So we are at the end of that. We have a psychologist, 1.0 full-time equivalent, and 1.67 reading interventionist that will now go from a grants budget back into the general fund budget. We anticipate keeping all the positions that we added, but that will be a larger increase as well. UPK federal grant during, also part of the American Rescue Plan, that grant was tripled, at least tripled. So there was a chance it could end this year and that we would have to talk about if we were still able to have two classrooms. But in the governor's proposal and all the proposals thus far, the full amount was still there for the UPK grant. So we're hoping that continues. Increased private placements, bringing an RJ classroom on campus as well as a student out of state in Pennsylvania. All comes into play for this coming budget, things we didn't anticipate at this time last year. We're going to need a new truck. And our maintenance truck is at its end of its useful life. Jeff and I will talk about whether this is going to be this year's budget or if we are able to push it to the 25, 26 budget. And contract negotiations are ongoing, so the unknown of that. Which means just the, not taking the whole entire budget, just the numbers of the large items we just talked about is just over 1.2 million in additional expenses. As the governor's proposal came out, we have a decrease in foundation aid anticipated for next year. We have a decrease in other aids. So we are looking right now currently at a hundred thousand dollar decrease in state aid.
What's the percentage of that? What percentage drop did we get?
First state aid decrease? That's 100,000 on just over 12 million, so. It's, yeah. It's broken out separately, but they have 5% on the runs, but that's because some of the other aids were not, are not going to be as low as they think they're going to be, so. And talk about overall for the entire region, you might have heard that as part of foundation aid, the hold harmless clause in the foundation aid formula in the governor's proposal is no longer there. There's many districts in the region who have been receiving more foundation aid than the formula allows. There are districts in the area, at least five or six, who are There are districts in the area, at least five or six, who are looking at 15 to 20% decreases in state aid. The good news is, uh, we've talked with a lot of legislators. Uh, a lot of my colleagues that just got back from Albany yesterday and all of the legislators are talking about that they intend to uh, come up with a solution for the formula, so that these districts include, and hopefully including ourselves, will not see a loss in aid. But it's over four, it's close to four billion dollars. So they're not going to be able to take care of that all in one year. And they're pretty clear that because of the work that needs to be done and the governor's proposal, they are anticipating that we will not have an on-time state budget. They're talking about approving it there at the end of April. So we could be looking as a board and making a decision on the tax levy, as, as a men's team, deciding on a tax levy based on what we're anticipating at the time of state aid and then more state aid could come through. As I've said in previous presentations, that hasn't happened recently, but 12, 15 years ago, there were state budgets that weren't passed till June, so. We're hoping that it's early enough in April that we can make an educated decision. But they're already talking about that this battle between foundation aid is going to be ongoing. And they're hoping those legislators are hoping at least we'll get a CPI increase to our foundation aid, so two or going from a negative foundation aid to two or 4% increase would obviously help out any district, so we're hoping for that.
Every school district can hit in foundation aid though?
Uh, no, there are some districts, there are some districts, um, there's a neighboring district that still got over a million dollar increase in foundation aid. There's some districts in, I don't have to dig deep because there's some districts in Drock County that got 10% or not quite 10 anymore, but 6, 7% increases. So for them, it's close to $2 million, so. But a majority of the districts in this region, probably at least half of them, did get 10 to 15% decreases.
If the removal of the hold harmless clause, is that, it opens the door to clawback? Why you didn't, it was, it should have been, is that retroactive too or just in future budgets?
That is, um, well, even though the governor proposed getting rid of it, it is still in law and statute, so they would have to come up with some reason, but the whole harmless meant is, means is, there are some schools that were for at least five to 10 years, were supposed to get 3 million in foundation aid, they were getting like 3.3 million. And the whole harmless meant that even though they were getting more foundation aid, they wouldn't.
Cause they, once they got all their now, they can kind of see they're all laid in.
Yeah, yeah.
You can never receive less. You can never receive less than you're entitled to.
Right. Yep. And then the last thing is just the bus replacement schedule. Uh, this year, 24, 25, two big diesel buses, one wheelchair diesel bus. Uh, costs just under 500,000. Uh, next year, two big diesel buses, 26, 27, two big diesel buses, one mini diesel bus. And then currently, when I made this, 27 to 34, was our electric bus seven-year fleet replacement. From those same legislators, they were also saying that they are already pushing hard to push back that 2027 deadline, so. As well as a couple other uh, issues that we've been fighting for for a while, that they're hoping to get into the budget as well. So this is still our bus replacement schedule in talking with Superintendent Bernard. Stay the course where we were until we know more, so. Questions?
Can I just add one piece to that? So the, the bus and the electrification of the buses, uh, we talk about community and we talk about board and the ability to advocate both as community members and as board members. We have to have conversations. This is not about being greedy. We all agree that there's, that there's ways that we can do that and it's going to make benefit for our grandkids and our grandkids' grandkids, right? But the current rate and the current process in which it's being rolled out is going to have a significant impact on all schools. But for schools like ourselves, and not only does that impact our ability to electrify our buses, but we would have to look at the infrastructure of our transportation center. And we would have to look at the infrastructure of what our town can do and what the surrounding community can support. Um, we are going to be looking at a joint RFP through the Wayne Finger Lakes um, region to do a study of the infrastructure of, and, and our current routes and that will happen this spring. Because that, really the goal behind that is to provide more objective data to our legislators of how challenging we know this is going to be. But this will give us specific numbers that, that once we get through that, we'll be able to share with the board and show. Uh, but I think there's just a level of, I don't think enough people know about this, to be honest with you. And, and so anybody that has conversations regarding this just needs to, to help people understand that the current timeframe is going to be very challenging for any school district to fit within. And again, it's not about moving in a direction to be substantial or to be sustainable when it comes to being green. It's about the current process in which it's being rolled out. So, you know, I say to the board, I say to the community, um, have conversations with the legislation that you know, have conversations with community members. Um, because this is something that we really have to wrap our hands around the impact. Not only with the current state of what was just shared in the last two weeks about the governor's recent adjustments potentially to the budget, but these big ticket items and the impact that they're going to have. Because the question I ask, and I think the question we should all ask, is if we're going to dump our funds into that and there's no plan from the state, and even, they can say that there's 500 million dollars set aside, but the data tells that that's not even close to enough money. Right? And the other thing we have to ask ourselves is if a district like ourselves and anybody around us needs to shift our reserves and our funds, what program is going to suffer? What student is going to suffer? And that's the question we have to ask.
I was having, it trapped me and there was another, something in there, not our local one, and, and he pulled in and this, it wasn't a suburban, maybe an expedition, something like that, right next to a, a school bus and we were talking about it and he said, and he said, and I said, put your finger on the inside of that tailpipe of that school bus and rub it. And there was no carbon on his finger. And I said, is your car going to have that same result? He goes, no, I'm already, I know, but it's not the buses that we had four years ago. There's a, things are so much different now. They're really, it's really an overreaction compared to where you can spend money to be greedy.
Right, right.
And it's something for the board's part, which we've added to our input to the Ford County School Board Association. Our position, if they're taking it together. One of, one of hopefully many things we can do.
Also, I didn't put it on the slide, but I wanted to also say that Dr. Weller and Mr. Bernard and myself, as the cabinet, have met with, we have met three out of the four, all three of the buildings. As well as special ed, we'll be meeting with transportation and such in the future. Just so we can get a collaborative discussion going with them about what their needs are moving forward. So it's been very good to see that collaboration and we've enjoyed having that conversation. And I didn't put that in the slide, but we're on, we have done three out of the four meetings for February and then we'll have a couple of meetings in March.
Thanks, Tim. I will follow you up with your updates. Appreciate it. Those are for you. Okay, anything else you guys before we kind of conclude the presentations here?
Matt, you look like it. I'm nervous. I'll ask. What do you have?
I thought we've got a work session coming up, so we can go with the details during the work session, so.
Okay, alright, yeah, fair enough.
And I'm almost like that, by the way.
No, I just, I want to leave you hanging, but. Uh, okay. Um, well, thank you very much to all of our presenters. Uh, fantastic, by far, far away technical expense. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, we're going to move on then to our regular business and we're going to try to move at a pretty quick clip here because we've got a framework to get through. So, um, item 3A is approval of minutes from our prior regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve minutes as stated?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Alright, yeah, this is a good way of operating, I think. Alright, uh, I mean, I've tried to move fast, but you're going to set a new record. Okay, personnel report, uh, you have in section B, personnel report, plus you have uh, two sheets that serve as addendum to that. A series of appointments. And we will go ahead and vote on that. Kim, I only have one resolution, right? Yeah, okay. Uh, the board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following personnel report, which you should have reviewed in your packet and in your documents. Um, per the consensus agenda. Motion Lisa, and second from Chelsea. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Let me ask a question on that. Are we, is there any plan to take advantage of Ms. Goodman's other counsel?
Sorry, hold on. I will, yes, let's hear your question. Any opposed? None, so the motion carries. Matt, if you have a question, yeah, go ahead. I just want to make sure we clear that vote, finish the vote. What's?
Yeah, I was very impressed with what you hires, um, LOTD teacher, teacher with her resume and her experience and I'm just curious.
Hey Matt, I, I don't mean to be rude, but, um, we should be careful with personnel, yeah, you know. Maybe, when we start to, when we start talking about individuals in this, we gotta be careful. So even if it's positive, I love that, but we should be really careful with that. So that's why I kind of, I honestly, I'm still getting used to this method of doing the personnel report because we do it by consent agenda. For the most part, a lot of those questions, other than if it were to the administration about strategy or something like that, we can ask those. Um, I, I rushed through, I probably should have asked her a question. That's one we should do offline.
Yeah, good catch.
Different type of form. Cool. Thank you, guys. So we're, I would, if you have anything, you can talk directly to Chris and if you want to bring it up to the board, we can definitely. Thank you. Um, so that puts us through the personnel section. Thank you, guys. A little bit of a speed bump there. Um, okay, good to go. And so that brings us to CSC and CPS report, appendix C. The board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to accept the CPSC recommendations as presented. Motion and a second. Second, are there any questions? Okay, cool. Everyone's good. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you very much, you guys. Well, I see Barbara, this is actually working out as good as I could imagine, so, she's good. Uh, alright, very good. Feel a little out of practice because we skipped several weeks, so I'm like going fast here, um, alright.
Barb, you can hear us alright, right?
Yep.
Okay, uh, so that takes us to reports and correspondence. You have in appendix D, the Kleenex auditor report. Um, did anyone have any questions on that? Okay, well then, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bernard for his superintendents report.
Thanks. Um, first, I just did want to recognize some things. Thank you to everybody for being flexible with the change in the board meeting. Uh, as everybody knows, we had some challenges here, uh, both in the community and in the region with power, uh, which led us to have to move the meeting, so thank you to everybody. Uh, which then impacts our board work session, which was supposed to be tonight, which we will move to uh, next week, January 31st, which will be reflected. Um, so it seems like it's far out, but I do want to do some shout-outs around the holiday season and some of the great things that happened within the district. Um, so I want to thank our leadership team for the generosity that they did in spreading the holiday cheer with our staff throughout December, with our students throughout December, staff members were full of delicious food. Um, I was able to take part in a fun minute to win it with Mr. McCarthy and his team that they did at their December faculty meeting. I didn't see it on Facebook, it's there, I'm afraid. Um, and uh, yeah, it was, I get competitive, so. Um, and I want to give a special thank you to everybody within our school and our community who donated to Toys for Tots, the Angel Tree gifts. Um, this was my first opportunity to be a part of the, um, Twin Cities holiday donations. Uh, we appreciate all the generosity and care. There was over 70 families in the Twin Cities that were supported through that, um, this year, so. A, a big shout-out to the staff, um, and the community members, Amanda McNamara, Sarah Huber, just to say, many, the Rotary Team, the students that were here, um, some really great work, so thank you to those folks. Um, just want to again mention that the work session was shifted to January 31st for the board. Um, the rebranding information, um, a big, it'll be shifted in a big conversation next week. In my town hall will be around what the student representatives talked about a bit tonight, so. Next Tuesday is, um, my January Town Hall, in which we will be introducing the members of the, um, committee that will be joining to talk and move us forward with the branding process. Um, and that, that membership now is, I believe, 12 folks strong, um, which is a, a combination of students, staff members, board members, um, administration, um, and, and the community. So it's really a collective group that's going to come together and lead that work. Um, that meeting is next Tuesday, um, at 6 o'clock right here, and that'll be the focal point of that conversation. Um, I also wanted to share that, um, the entry plan work that I started, seems like forever ago, but started in July, um, has been completed. I've shared now with the staff, all three buildings. Um, and will be sharing with the board of the work session next week, the findings and the priorities that have come out of that. Um, and that I'll be sharing with the community at my town hall in February. Um, and what that work is going to do is that's going to lead us into exploring, prioritizing, um, and piloting some changes in our district, starting with what was shared with me through those conversations and how we're going to start to propose some of those changes. And last but not least, I just wanted to share a couple of dates, uh, is that reminder, we have an early release day tomorrow. Um, for the full district, it is the emergency, sorry, Friday, the day had Friday. I've been a day, I've been a day head all week, so that has been, I apologize. Um, so that'll be on the 26th, which is also the end of the marketing period. That's a UPK 12 early release. It's also, um, the emergency early release, so that information has been communicated, so please parents, make sure you check because that's a little bit different. Uh, then we have another early release in Feb, on February 9th, that's just for the elementary school. And then our next board meeting is here, like, um, Tim shared, February 14th, Happy Valentine's Day here in the foyer. So, that is it, I believe. Yep, that is all my stuff, so, thank you.
Yeah. Scott's going to have some power. I thought you said you.
It just doesn't seem, you know, very, it's all, okay, alright, uh.
That's it, I'm good.
Okay, cool. Do you guys have any questions for? Thank you for that update. Yeah, it was just like a weird kind of extended recap because our late meetings, but thank you very much. Um, okay, that wraps reports and correspondence. In appendix D, you have the financial report. And I'll ask you any questions, otherwise I'll accept that. Do we have any questions? Okay, Kim, I'll go ahead and accept that on behalf of the board. Did that right this time. Um, okay, now we get into some, and we've got the treasurer's report as well, appendix F. Any questions on that? We don't often get a lot, but you're always welcome to ask. Um, okay, thank you. Appendix G is a memorandum of agreement. I'll read the resolution here. Uh, the board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the attached memorandum agreement with Red Jacket Faculty Association regarding the modification of a, to a retiring incentive. Can we get a motion for that, Chelsea? And a second from Lisa. Alright, so you guys have had a chance to review any questions?
Eight, single.
And that is. Uh, okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Keep you moving. Uh, alright, and in similar fashion, uh, we've got another resolution here for an MOA. The board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the attached memorandum agreement with Red Jacket Faculty Association regarding the modified terms of a TOSA agreement. And yes, other taxes, we have a motion, Lisa, second from Scott. Is this all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Awesome. Uh, new business. Uh, this is one that's been hanging out there for a bit in terms of, we had some information in the presentation. The first time we'll discuss board docs. I don't even know that we have a, we have a resolution? I don't even know that we have a, do we have a resolution in here?
No, no.
It's been a little while. This is just a discussion item. So you guys have had, we had a presentation about board docs. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go check out some of the examples of neighboring districts that use it. We got some details from Tim about the cost of board docs. The analysis is a little bit, kind of gotta look at, look through the several years, right? Because there's the cost and then the aid that comes back in, in a subsequent year. Tim, are you in a position to answer questions if there are any about the costs associated with this?
As long as I don't have to copy that right now.
Well, I can share mine, you can read it, so. But let me just see, what are the questions, discussion, opinions?
I'm in favor, I, I know there was a cost associated with it, but I did spend some time looking at the other districts who use it. It's very, it's very easy to navigate. All the information's there. I think it's easy for users, community members to, to look at what's available. I think it would be an efficient way to get information out faster to the community. So I'm, the tool itself, I'm in favor of.
Totally awesome.
I think, I mean, not price per price, but I think the community deserves something that's easier, that looks around now, and something more responsive, minutes and things like that. So I think it'd be appreciated, I think it's the best we have to make.
There's a reason that so many other districts are using it. It's, I mean, it's pretty, it's responsible.
And we're looking to oddly, right, and to be faster.
Yeah, I'd like to make better use of those Chromebooks. I, I don't use it, honestly, Nate asked me, it's, it's awesome. I do use it, not as much as I'd like, I think this would offer the opportunity to make better use and maybe eventually get away from some of the extra paper. No rush, man. Scott, do you have a thought? No? I mean, I talked a little bit.
Yeah, that's.
I think it comes down to.
I'm kind of neutral right now, I'll be honest with you, so I can't, I kind of lean towards it.
Okay. All of my opinion, which is I think it comes down to a couple thousand dollars a year, I think, where you kind of ever, you look at the cost minus the actual, in any given year, the aid you'd be able to afford. I think it saves a lot of work for, not, to some degree, I think it would be more efficient for us, but I think Kim or, you know, whoever's doing that, whoever's doing that work plus the access to community, kind of looking to switch to publish minutes versus having to copy and file and.
These quotes that we have are just for, till the end of the year, only from December to June. It's not a full year.
Well, I think if you read through this, essentially what happens is in year one, you bear the, basically, essentially the full cost of it, seven thousand dollars. In year two, you get like a partial, partial aid, I wanna say. And then in year three, essentially, you're in a cycle where you've paid the full amount and got your, is it ninety percent, Tim?
Oh, no, most of it's seventy.
Eighty, eighty point nine?
Yes, before, yeah.
Right, that's our eighty percentage on that. So, so you're getting that eighty percent, and we get into the cycle of, you know, after the first year, it's obviously a little bit overloaded, but then, you know, you take the, the full annual amount, which is about twelve thou, about twelve thousand dollars. But it's only, it's essentially eighty percent of that, as you start to get in the cycle.
Yeah, I'd not, I would think. It's a, it's a small place to pay to try it. Just to get rid of the yard. Right.
Yes, I think, I think we're all seeing the benefit of that. Let's, we can, we still have another opportunity to discuss, so. I think what we'll do is probably prepare a resolution. You know, if we feel like we'd want to vote on it, we can do that at the next meeting. We can also have more discussion, so. There's nothing to rush into here.
Do we actually need a resolution, or do we get this vote on purpose?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think you can recommend it, Chris, that you want him to purchase it.
Okay. We can, we can decide, some way or another, we want to just make sure the groups in favor of that, and. Give the work, yeah. Do we want to just?
Yeah, just make a motion to purchase.
You know what, I want to just respect the fact, give everyone a chance to absorb the feedback. We'll come back at the next meeting and we'll see if that remains a sentiment. There's not a huge push here to get this done right, so. I think it's okay to be able to take the time to deliver, if that's okay with you. Cool, thank you very much, good discussion. Brings us to our next item, which is a policy. This policy, sixty-one ninety workplace violence prevention is driven by some state laws that kick in, and we also have some timing around this. Seems like a no-brainer that schools stop being excluded from such a requirement, some of the law, to have these policies in place and some of the things that could complement along with it. So that would be appendix J. I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then we'll see if there are any questions. Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the superintendent, waive the second reading, and complete the adoption of the following policy, sixty-one ninety workplace violence prevention policy statement. Do I get a motion on it? Motion? Second, motion Lisa, second from Chelsea, thank you very much. And I want to really quickly say, you guys know, I'm in favor of giving policies their due consideration, meaning first reading, come back, second reading, vote. But I also have said that in cases where we have, where there's a imminent need to get some implement, and that's what we're doing here, essentially, right? So I think there were some folks that had questions about the policy. Did you get them answered? Are there any remaining, some questions? Okay. If, Barb, sorry, I gotta go to look over. Barb, you're good? Policy, okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you very much. And that concludes our business for the public portion of the meeting. We do have an executive session planned, so those are in the audience. I hope it to be quick, if there's nothing left when we get back, just so you know. So the board, I'm gonna ask for a motion. At the moment here, the board is going to enter into executive session in accordance with the open meeting law to discuss collective negotiations with the RJFA pursuant to the Taylor Law. And that would be at seven eighteen PM. Turn in the motion. Lisa, second from Chelsea. So we are under that headed to executive session, so. Thank you very much for those who presented and attended. If you're not here, we'll, we'll.